Let me know if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, would you like to call us any of the order and please rise to reflect in the light?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item is approval of the agenda at one change. I want to delete number 2A for the liquor inspection.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
Can I ask the reason why?
Yeah, it's not, I got further information and it's not applicable at this time.
Okay.
So, we couldn't do anything if we wanted to.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the one amendment to it?
I support it. Oh, go ahead.
Support.
Moving in support. To approve the agenda with the one change. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of minutes for the meeting of October 8.
Support.
Moving in support. To approve the minutes for October 8. Is there any discussion?
Please support that.
I do.
Hearing no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, old business, item A, Casco Township Bell River Park Master Plan. Ms. Pamela Blau is here tonight and she brought us new and larger maps.
Awesome.
Do you want to go over it or what do you want to do?
Well, just to maybe share with you that the one that we brought tonight has shown the change in sort of taking the play area out that's over by the river. That was sort of being shown as more of a mowed lawn and replace that either with meadow or some sort of native planting. And that's, of course, we're trying to include just everyone's thoughts, including since Rivers and Conservancy. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
For some feedback.
You bet.
And so, we've incorporated that. I think we've made just a couple other small changes that were noted, I think, on a gate, showing the electronic gate and labeling it that way. There were only about three or four tiny little edits that we had made off from the minutes from the last meeting. And then updated it, colorized it, put it in, you know, it's totally AutoCAD based, which allows us to have a drawing that we can continue to move forward with. Do you have any comments on that? I've got a little bit more to talk about, but I don't want to
This is very nice.
...bowle you over to start with.
I guess my only question is by looking at it, it doesn't really say[229.01][229.01](phone rings) Excuse me. Somebody's been getting me all day. I don't know who. He's trying to sell me something. It doesn't designate what surfaces of any are paved versus stone.
Right.
And that's okay, as long as the site plan's going to show, you know, what everything is when we do that.
Yeah.
But I just didn't want any misconceptions.
No, and that's why I said I've got a little bit more to talk about. And that's partly, I think, we'd come into preparing sort of the site plan application as to what we show those surfaces and having a discussion about that planning and zoning ordinance wise. As to what we would be allowed, because many of your parking lots, shall we say, are required to be paved in the township. And whether or not with the change in zoning to recreation and having conversations, I think that's something we can talk about. So, I brought along some phasing and conceptual costs with me and we've broken that apart. So, first we show the gravel going in and we also show paving on it. So, we can, if we can do gravel or an aggregate surface, then we can simply take those numbers out or not pave it. But our, it doesn't matter what our preference is. We're not here to say you need to have it paved. We looked simply in the zoning ordinance. We generally saw you required paved surfaces. So, we try and include sort of, I don't want to call it the worst safe, but the most, worst case, but the most, what we're seeing visibly to be what you would be required. And then if we can back that off, that helps a lot. But we wouldn't want to say apply for a D and R trust fund grant to put in the front ex, you know, access and parking lot and then not have enough money. You know, like apply for a grant of not enough money, thinking we're going to put it in gravel and then suddenly the, we go to get a building permit for it and, you know, you're zoned for paving. So, that's where we are on that. We just think it's that next level of research that we need.
Well, that goes to my question is, you know, I'd like to keep it, to start with, very simple. Okay, then we're going to rely on you to tell us
What grants?
What, if any, grants are available to make improvements as far as, we'll take the parking lot and maybe the drive down to the river or the handicap walkway or whatever. Is it worth going for a grant for that? I know they're much harder to get for improvement than they are for acquisition. And I don't know what the chances are. There are some that pay 20%, some that pay 40, some 60.
Right.
And obviously, the more they pay, the harder it is to get them. So, that would be, to me, part of the determining factor if, and even if we had to get a ZBA variance for the parking lot for the gravel, which costs about $300 to the township to do that, you know, it's going to cost quite a bit to pave the entrance in the parking lot and do it right.
And you'll see that in our estimates, yes.
Right. So, that's where I'm sitting right now.
We agree. We're not saying no at all.
I understand.
We're just being the realists of the thing. And part of it too is it helps us identify the process we need to go through to get you ready for that. Right? So, grant wise, it's an attractive grant project. I mean, we know that your emphasis is to first get, you know, an entrance, a little parking lot and some space that everyone can get out and use the park. And then there's some informal trails that are out there that people can use and have access to the property. And then moving towards getting access to the Bell River, right? That is, so those are things both that on a piece of property that's been purchased with a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund dollars, you know, you have a site that we know is scoring well or you wouldn't have just got the acquisition grants either, you know? And part of it's your water access and part of it's your natural resources and that you don't have another park within the township that this is, is your primary, is your primary park. But, you know, part, I always think a big part of writing the grants is having a good practical plan that you can show is feasible. They don't like to take on a plan that has a lot of unanswered questions, shall we say, you know? Or you're not, well, we don't know if we're doing this or we want to do that. No, you want to
You have to be very specific.
You want a real specific.
In the right application, if you want to be considered.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct. And, you know, that's why to us, to put together a plan like that, then you have something that looks very specific. And I think by getting through sort of the site plan, submittal and zoning process, that we can identify what those drives and roads can be.
So, tonight, number, our number one goal, that's what we're meeting tonight, is to approve the master plan for the park.
Correct.
And then probably our meeting is in three weeks, a regular meeting. The stuff you sent us today, which you're going to get to in a minute, right? The communication we got today.
Yes, and then I also, I got some costs I need to pass up.
Hopefully, we can get that ironed out to exactly what we want and it makes you happy and approve that on the 12th of November.
Okay.
Because I just got it tonight as I walked in.
Yeah, we all did.
You all did.
And I went over it for about 30 seconds. I only got four questions.
And I brought, and I brought copies too, so.
And I'm going to give, and basically, it's under the scope of services. I want to make sure we're getting everything we need and that your cost covers that. If it doesn't, you have to adjust your cost. I don't expect you to donate, but, you know, I want to understand exactly
Right, that's realistic.
All the scope of services. So, that's, otherwise, you know, theoretically, we could do it tonight, but I'm not familiar enough with parks to go, probably give a copy of that to Chris, because he deals with parks every day, for the scope of services thing. And now I want to get with our township planner, because he's going to process the site plan and hopefully, we can get that ironed out good and go down it on the 12th of November for your services for the site plan, drainage plan.
That would be, keep us moving forward.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a couple of weeks.
And that's what we need to do, yes.
Now, if we were to decide, do all the improvement grants have to be in April 1 also? So, I don't know if we'd have time to
I think you do.
So, we'll see.
I think you do, because really, the grant forms don't come out to January.
Right.
And we're
We'll be ready by November.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll be good.
Okay, let's see how it goes. Because, you know, since they only do it a year, one a year, and you don't find out until December normally, right? If you got it.
Uh, yeah, that's, yeah, they meet in December.
So, you know, if you don't get it in by April, it's another year.
Correct.
So, I'm just keeping that in the back of my head.
Yeah, they keep that date and they haven't changed that date in
Well, the trust fund board
Thirty years, I think.
The trust fund board meets in December and that's when they award all the grants and stuff.
And then they start a new cycle.
Yep, they do. Okay. So, you have stuff for us?
I do have more stuff. Now, we began to, we itemized a lot of items on here and that's so we can arrange them a lot of different ways for you, because it's in a spreadsheet. And because everybody asked, well, what if we wanted to take this out or we wanted to move this to phase two or phase one is too big or, gee, we don't, we don't have to pave at all. How does that impact the costs? So, this allows you, and we've got things in like what size road are we going to cross the wetland with? You know, right now, we sort of have a little, we have a single drive and how are we going to do that? And how, what width is that going to be? A one lane and we take turns going over it with a walking path? Or are we making that for roads and we're making a separate boardwalk? As we answer those questions, it helps us dial in the costs and when you want to do them. So, the first kind of phase, we tried to put everything that was, you know, to start kind of at the, if you kind of go down each of the sets of these costs, they're starting at the front of the park and then moving towards the Bell River.
Right.
Thinking that that makes probably the most sense, you know? We may not get to the boardwalks and fishing decks down on the Bell River. The majority, you know, we may build one, but the additional ones, that may be 20 years from now. Right? This is a long range plan, but it's always key to kind of think of the sequential order that you'd want to put them in at. And also, that's really handy, because sometimes in a community, you just get somebody who's very interested in a component, you know? Maybe somebody gets very interested in having a picnic pavilion there or something like that and you can show them what, what kind of goes with that picnic pavilion. So, everything listed here provides for ADA and universal accessibility. So, there's walkways to everything. You may say, well, why do we have a walkway to the pavilion? I can just walk across the grass or something. Well, not everyone can. Or is it convenient or easy? And gee, isn't it a lot easier to roll your cooler there too or maybe a wagon or stroller? So, you know, we even include like a walk from the parking lot over to the pavilion and items such as that, because it's more of a complete, complete type of cost. They're always scary when you see them at first, but
Yes.
They are always scary, but it, but just think, this would totally build everything out there.
But we don't have to.
But you don't have to.
We can't afford to.
No. And nobody thinks you're going to build this in three years or five years, you know? This may be 20 years or 25 years.
Yep.
You know, kind of a slow and steady way to progress.
And parts of it, we don't, we don't necessarily need to put out there and we can put parts in and parts we
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And, yeah, and it's even like, say, play equipment. Now, we put that in. Here it is, buy it, all installed, the surfacing under it, ready to go. Well, maybe you decide to do a community build on that.
Yeah.
Where you buy the equipment yourself, you already, if the township buys it themselves, they already save, right? Tax and markup and stuff like that. And then you do a community build to put it together and
St. Clair just had a wonderful community build with their, their little parks here.
What's the playground, what's the, what do you envision is the playground surfacing?
Well, that would be part of the overall design if it's, and it depends on the funding source. You know, minimum, it needs to be engineered wood fill, which is the wood chips cut in the little rectangles.
Yeah, so that's what I was, so if you've got wood chips, you really don't need anything else, because kids are always eating wood chips, so that can be your whole place or this.
Kids are what?
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking about the puppy.
But if you go for universal accessible grants, then you need something more like a top rubberized tile or something like that. You don't have to do the poured in place, but you have to have something a little more stable. So, some of it is your funding sources that you use.
Away from baby, now we're going to hear about wood chip eating is the next thing that kids are doing.
It's natural, it's a good one. Your walk, your, all your walkways here are all on
My kids, my grandkids don't eat wood chips.
Six, that is hard surface or stone?
That would be concrete.
Concrete.
What is concrete?
Concrete, not blacked out, concrete.
That would be concrete.
For though.
With six foot, it's very hard to pave asphalt
Right.
Less than 10 or 12 feet wide. 10, you'll see some eight, but the pavers are all just made wider. And once you start making it small, you really, you don't get a good paving job. And we also have soils out there that for small surfaces and things are going to be pretty, I think, hard to stabilize.
So, that includes getting rid of the old topsoil, putting sand or stone under it.
Well, yeah, you can see we have grading and drainage under most of these items and that's so, as we build a piece, we can
Good.
Make sure we have funding in for grading of that piece.
And drainage, yes.
You know, we're not looking to, none of this will include, say, like a parking lot with catch basins and things like that. We're looking to surface drain and then into swales and then from swales to surface drain.
Lot of information here.
Yeah, very well done.
So, you just have to take it and digest it and look at it. I didn't expect you to, you know, just understand it all instantly, but I think it's a very good piece for you to take and take a look at and think about or you can kind of say, because people say to me, well, you know, why do you have that in for $25,000 for the entry gate and the electric gate on it? Well, part of it is even, we don't know what your power is that's out there. We know, I know there's an old well out there that may have had a pump, electric pump with it, but we're not sure what your electrical service is you out there. We may have to actually put electrical service in there. And so, you know, they're kind of lump sums, but that's why, that's generally what we find it falls within.
So, I mean, overall, this seems, you know, wonderful. Great job. Clearly, you know, makes, certainly makes clear to me what would be involved in making this thing happen. The one question I have is that I, and I think this is where you address it, is in this crossing of the wetland, because that's a little tired.
Yeah.
And so, I know that's going to take some work and I see you've got
Yeah.
Three culvert pipes and retaining walls, so I'm assuming that's what you're envisioning to repair that and make it
That's what we put in for now and that's part of, you know, our look at how to make that work and be
Safe for vehicular passage.
Well, we want it safe. We also know it's all in the wetland.
Right.
So, we have to, we can't just put a lot more fill in there, because we have to balance our cut and fill, right? Because we're in a wetland, that's required. And they really wouldn't want us to take more of the wetland. So, we're showing right now additional culverts there and then some retaining walls to kind of, instead of have it taper down and take up more space in the wetland to actually have it firm. And that one there will take design at the time to actually solve it.
Right.
Quite frankly.
Yeah, you're throwing a dart at the map. You got a good concept, a good idea here, but
Here is a cost effective, what we think. And here's the other part is we're trying to put a road there, right? To get access to the river as well as a pedestrian walkway. So, we looked at it from the factor of what if we had the road, but then since there's not a lot of room, that we said, okay, we're going to have a separate boardwalk crossing. Well, the boardwalk crossing is going to cost as much
As making the road wider.
As making a roadway with a walkway, you know, right on it.
Just
Just get everyone across at one narrow point and impact the wetland the least and so that's what we're showing right, right now for that in the budget. But you can see, it's a ton of money
Oh, yeah.
To do that. But we could include that, see, to me, that's what we include eventually in a grant for the, for the access to the Bell River. Because your access to the Bell River will really help score on the grants and you can show it as the site along the water trail and things like that. And that's a more expensive item, so that would be something we'd want to include in a, like a trust fund grant.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we don't have the perfect solution on this, but we know we've got probably enough budget in there that
We've, we've started the process and that's what kind of, I think, I think this is fabulous. I think you've done a wonderful job.
Well, thank you.
Of course. It's why we hired you.
Well, it takes, it takes time and thought, yes.
Is there anything else we need with, from her before we okay this master plan?
No, we can, if you're happy, you can prove that anytime and then
And then ask her more questions?
We didn't discuss the stuff she gave us
For the next meeting?
Yeah, I just want to get more information, so after
What information do you need?
I mentioned before, I want to make sure it covers all the scope of services, that she's happy and we're happy, so that we don't come up after a while and she says, well, I got to increase the cost because you wanted this and it wasn't in the scope of services. So, you make sure you get everything you want in the scope of services, then she looks at it and says, okay, the amount I gave you was fine. Or she'll say, no, it's going to take a little more money to do that. So, then when we agree to it, then we should be good. I don't want to change things on the go, because it makes things more congested and it's not great. So, that'll give us three weeks. I'll run it by Chris, I'll run it by our planner. As far as the master plan, we can approve it anytime you want to make a motion tonight.
Yeah, I want to make a motion right now.
Well, go ahead.
I make a motion that we adopt master plan that Ms. Blau has presented to us.
What's your reason, Patty, for moving it that so fast? Doing it in three weeks after we get to looking
Why would we, we're here to do the master plan.
The reason we met tonight was to approve
Approve the master plan.
So, then we can move on to the site plan.
I'm sorry that I was, I was
No, it just shows basically the big map. This is what we planned on doing.
Okay, that's why we're here. Okay.
I misunderstood what you wanted to do, Bill.
Right.
The master plan's been paid looking at the site plan. This has been paid for.
So, Pam said the next step in our journey was to approve the master plan. So, that's why we're here tonight. We're not obligated to pay anything, to do anything.
This is the master plan, the site plan.
Right, well, the next
And it's already been paid for.
The next would be our agreement
That's under the other contract.
Yeah.
That they approved, whatever.
So
It's already been approved.
All right, my mistake.
So, no, it's good for us to kind of understand the whole problem.
Okay.
Step by step, that might be good.
Yep, that's the plan.
Did you know that this is under her other contract?
This is the master plan right here.
It's been paid for
Gotcha.
And everything?
Yep.
So, you got interrupted. So, we have, you were, you were making a motion to adopt the master plan as presented
Presented tonight.
Okay.
Okay, is there any support for the motion?
Yeah, Dan. You did support me, right, Dan?
Pardon?
Yes, absolutely.
Dan did?
I don't think there's any designation on anything as far as site plan or master plan one or anything, it's just the master.
No, just master.
Okay.
You can say dated with the days, date.
Okay.
Dated, you want me to put down
I'll add that into your motion.
All right, that dated October 22nd, 2019. We updated the date.
And you're supporting that also?
Yes.
Okay. Moving in support. To approve or adopt, whatever term you use, the master plan for the Bell River Park as given to us on October 22nd. Is there any discussion? Ever, oh, call vote please.
You throw, bring into this. All right, I rest everything, Dan, then Dan?
I have to do that once in a while.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Patty, yes?
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, now we'll go on
Now, this afternoon, you emailed us this other communication. Like I say, I got it when I walked in tonight, but I only looked through it. I just have a couple of points I want to ask, because while you're sitting here, it's easier to
Yeah.
Clear it up than calling you on the phone.
Sure is.
The second paragraph at the end, it says, final construction documents will be completed when funding becomes available under separate contract. That would be the contract in year or a different one.
That would be a different contract, meaning construction document
Like I say, I got it when I walked in tonight, but only looked through it. I just have a couple of points I want to ask because while you're sitting here, it's easier to clear it up than calling you on the phone.
Sure is.
The second paragraph at the end, it says, "Final construction documents will be completed once funding becomes available under separate contract." That would be the contract in year or a different one?
That would be a different contract, meaning construction documents, like when you put it out to bid to a contractor.
Okay.
So since we don't know what you'd be bidding yet.
I understand.
We didn't put together a price for that.
Your site plan is going to indicate what the surface is and if it's paved, what your subsurface is, the thickness of the surface, you know.
To some extent, we will.
That's a normal site plan.
Yeah, there hasn't been like a soil boring done out there.
I don't know if you need it for a parking lot.
Well...
Normally, they put eight inches of stone to get rid of topsoil.
But if we're showing gravel, it's...
Well, they just changed the ordinance or they're in the process, just six inches of pe, or limestone.
Okay.
Which isn't very much.
We'll just say we'll check that ordinance.
Okay, but your site plan's going to show things like that?
Yes.
Okay. To get, you know, we don't expect you to show the construction print, oh, for like a pavilion.
No.
That's down the road.
Six.
When we get that far, I know the county buys them, I believe, and then they hire somebody to put it up.
Right.
But we're looking at the cheapest one is $60,000. The second one is $80,000, so that probably won't be first on our parade. No, I just wanted to make sure on that. And the next little one line paragraph says special land use. I don't believe that it is a special land use in recreation open space, but I can easily check that with the planner.
I picked that off, off from something I was reading in the ordinance, so...
Well, it mentions a special use for like campgrounds and stuff, you know, where you, people come in, pay you 20 bucks a night, put the tent up and sleep there. But we're not anticipating that.
So...
Well, we can, well, I'll check with the planner.
It fall, and that's, it often falls funny for recreation because recreation can be a campground, but it can also be a public park, which is really different.
Well, I brought the ordinance along when I read it before the meeting, I ran it back to the ordinance.
Okay.
Number five, I assume that's going to cover, it says documentation verifying approval, so that will mean all applicable applications, which would include Eagle probably somewhere. I don't know.
Well, we won't be able to submit to Eagle, and I'm not trying to be contradictory here.
Until you buy the river.
Till we get, well, till we actually get full construction documents down in the river areas and because they require us to show cross sections and we have to do cut and fill calculations.
So you know, you know, we have wetlands and we're even including that bridge.
Right.
That would involve Eagle, even though eventually the water's going to get in the river.
It will eventually require Eagle permits, but we have to do them right before we construct it.
Okay. But you may install something similar to a detention pond or a retention pond. Somebody asked me today if there's going to be a pond on site. And I said, "I don't think there was a plan for that." You have water in the river, now you open up another whole belly of things to worry about with a pond. So I didn't think that was the case. So, but basically number five says you're going to document whatever applications are necessary.
Contact the Drain Commission.
Right, the Road Commission.
Yeah.
Because we have a driveway going to the road.
Mm-hmm.
And, okay, well, just glancing through it real quick, that's all I came up with. Does anybody else have any questions on that? I'm sure I'll be calling you if the planner has any questions.
Well, we were wondering about, you know, just maybe if we can clarify a couple of things with the planner, maybe.
Yep, no problem. Normally, when you submit a site plan, you submit like 12 copies because everybody on the planning commission gets one. The planner gets one, the board gets one, and normally the fire chief gets one, but I don't know if that's applicable here, other than the width of the driveway for a fire truck. There's not a whole lot to review, so I'll ask. So that's my only questions. I can bring Dennis and Kathy up to date a little bit. You got, you grabbed a new map, right?
I have a map, but I...
A big one?
When you said you were on like number five or whatever, I don't have that.
We don't have that.
There's a letter.
This one.
No, no, the letter's here, I mean, that letter's not, it's not there, Dan.
No, yes, the one, those two things.
This is for the board anyway. Oh, okay.
Yeah, he gave us the price for...
This is for us. This is for us.
Well, you can have that, but that was...
Which, which is that?
Those, anything that's on the table.
Anything. There's three files there and a basement.
On the table.
Yeah. No, Mr. Bunch looked over it, had a couple of suggestions. Ms. Calow actually took the one and made a change, which I liked. I think we'll like that.
Save you money on the long-term maintenance anyway, you don't have to mow.
So what do you do with the frag mighties? Spray them, kill them?
Oh, something, something.
What do you mean, there's all kinds up there now?
Okay.
Last time I was over there.
What, the frag? Oh, yeah. Yeah, you got a frag plantation. Don't they have to burn them out? I don't know, they do that.
No, they spray them in the...
No, you either, you either have to, you either have to treat them chemically, you have to spray them, and you should do it before they go to seed like this. Or there's a technique called cut and drown if there's enough standing water. That depends on how deep the water is and how long it's going to stay. But, I mean, I, the, we are the fiduciary for the Lake St. Clair SISMA Cooperative and Basin Species Management Area, so I have staff members that are out killing weeds all the time.
The Road Commission's, they do it in about five years, they would spray a spot.
Your Road Commission's doing it, and your Drain Commissioner over here in St. Clair County is deadly serious about it.
Yep.
So there are some people that are paying a lot of attention to it.
But they do it when they're mature.
Yeah.
So is it too late to treat them yet this fall?
All the killing has to be done before first frost.
Yep, usually once it freezes, everything shuts down.
Yeah, so, I mean, we were, we've just finished up a big scramble to get everything done.
I have a few questions, I don't know if it's afterwards or...
Sure, feel free.
Is there going to be like a phase one, phase two, phase three part of development for the park?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so if that's going to be maybe posted, because I know that for community members that aren't a part of the committee and don't come to the meetings per se, they show up and they see a parking lot and they see a picnic table, they go, "This is not a park," you know what I mean? So something that indicates that there's phase one, phase two, and phase three, or whatever it's going to be. And then also I would like to know what things we as members of the community can help, whether it's with fundraisers or with everybody grab a shovel and do X, Y, or Z from phase one, I mean, those kind of things where we can pull the community together and get this going because the kids are getting old.
That's good.
The one part I didn't miss was this might be a 25-year project.
Oh, I totally missed that.
You did miss it.
Wow!
You and I are used to doing this more quickly.
If you look at the big map...
That's just us.
Two million bucks.
Two million dollars.
The big map and the little map are different, though.
Yeah, because it's updated. The big ones, the update.
The big one is the new one.
Yeah.
The big one's the new one.
Like if you do everything on there, it's 1.8 million.
But, you know, that's a good point that we could actually have like a plywood size with painted on there saying, hey, this is...
Yeah, because it'll, it'll engine vehicles that are just driving by and it'll cause, you know, interest and maybe, you know, and have the number, call the township, see how you can help.
Hopefully by spring.
You have to promote interest. You have to promote it. Like advertise, you have to advertise.
Hopefully by the spring, with Pam's help, we'll have construction plans to bid out to do the drive of the parking lot and stuff. And then by April 1, if we're going to do for a grant, we'll get that in by April 1 and we'll find out in December on that.
I think you're headed down the right path here. I mean, I think with the, you know, the first flush of her proposal to you, the proposed, you know, scope of services for the next step, getting positioned to take action, you know, getting the permit stuff in place allows you to start, you know, while, while she's doing that and while that's going on, the park committee can start to make some decisions about where you would like to invest at the front end. Because this may not just be phase one, phase two, phase three, this may be phase one through 17.
Right, yes.
Because you may, you may decide that, you know, we're only going to spend $600,000 on this in the first three years, and so that's this, this, and this, and we're going to come back to the other stuff later.
Our revenue is very limited, we get about $17,000 a year. So when you figure that for 1.8 million, yeah, we got some in the bank, but we don't have that kind of money in the bank, so...
Couple of bake sales and you'll be fat down the hatch.
See, what did I tell you?
Did you get a copy of her communication with the scope of services, Chris?
Yeah, 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 that's this...
The letter they mailed.
The letter, yeah.
Okay.
That you guys just got.
Yeah, we'll get a chance, look it over.
I will, yeah, I will get it real quick and we'll talk.
We'll talk and get it honed in.
Yeah, well, I, it looks...
We're close.
Yeah, no, I, I think you're on the right path. I think this is...
You got to start somewhere.
Headed in the right direction and you need to...
You know, we're hoping to start simple. Hopefully get some grants that are applicable and really help us and then move on. But, you know, the pavilion, it shows two of them. One's $60,000, one's $80,000.
Well, we'll start with the $60,000. Is that ready by the 4th of July?
Well, we'll see.
Well, but, but that's some stuff that you guys can talk about seriously within the context of the committee and whether or not, whether or not that is a, is there going to be a volunteer building being, are we going to build our own pavilion? I mean, you, you can do that. You can buy the materials and you can build it. But there, you know, you need to have some, you could build this pavilion yourself soon, but do it within the context of this plan so that at the point in the future, when you decide that you want it to be ADA, it's positioned so that these paths can go into it and, you know, so you can, I mean, you can do some of this stuff right out of the gate.
Is those kinds of questions that we can come back and ask you later on, something like this? That you can give us a route to go or a two?
She's at the helm, hopefully need, hopefully she's going to get us moving in the right direction.
Keep moving, we got to keep the plans moving. I mean, you can work on, you know, like you're, all those things you're talking about, but at the same time, we have to move the plan forward to get through the zoning and planning and be ready. So when you do apply for grants, they want to know that everything is cleared and ready to roll.
If you're going to do your grant, you really need approval of the site plan and drainage plan, so you're, here's the map.
And they ask you about the Drain Commission, they ask you about the Road Commission. We have to list all that in the grant application.
Well, technically, I don't know that we have to involve the Drain Commission because it's not a drainage district.
It's not a drainage.
No, because when you get near the river, there's no county drains.
Yeah.
So you can go to them, but you don't have to, it's not required there.
They do, they do still do the soil erosion and sedimentation.
The board helps, that's it, in St. Clair County.
Really?
Yeah, but if you, if you put everybody on the list to let them know the grant, whether you contacted or not, or whether they, I was going to advise us anything, but at least the grant people looking, so, yeah, they've already contacted them, we already contacted them.
She's going to get some problem, then it's approved, whatever you plan on doing.
True, though, so because of St. Clair County is different than maybe another county and the grant people say, "Well, you don't have this on there."
Right.
Have it on even if we don't need it. Just, just, yeah, yeah. So you're going to be writing grants?
Yeah.
Yes?
If we, if we pay her, yeah.
Well, or, you know, we're starting to prepare you to do that process.
Right.
You know, that's why you can see the drawing at a larger size, but we're also producing it small. Because when grants don't want a large size, they specifically tell you it has to be...
Oh, they want everything.
They want it certain. So, but I'm just saying mentally, as you begin this, even from the beginning of preparing it that way, so it's like the design is all ADA and universal accessible and we've already begun calculating all the grades and things, because that gives us the proper lengths of walkway and, and things we need so that, when you, you know, one of the hardest parts for a lot of people, when they get to go working on a grant, they'll say, "Well, how much is that?" Or, "How much does this cost?" Because the grants ask you to break that out. Well, then you can take this cost sheet and, and, you know, work directly from that.
So you write, you've written grants before?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, what is the, what would be the items that would keep a community from getting a grant?
Well, it's a pretty complicated process. It can, part of the, let me tell you, a key thing is matching your project to the grant type.
Yes.
Okay, so they basically think of it differently than, you know, opposite of kind of how you said that there's a grant out there and they usually tell you what type of projects they target. So the best thing you can do is work to pick elements that tie into that type of grant.
Type of grant that you're looking for.
So if somebody gives grants for play equipment, you don't want to really be going for, say, a shelter or a canoe launch to them, you want to be going for play equipment to them. Or if you're going for a canoe launch, then you want to focus...
Stay away from the play equipment.
Right, right.
Identify what grants you want to play for.
Because there's many.
And part of that, so you balance that, that's kind of what the council board and everyone involved will do in essence, too, is look to say, "Well, we have this much money, what are our first priorities?" And then work to match those up and what grant funds can become available for those.
Or what does it take to finish phase one?
Yeah.
Get to phase two, "I need this, this, and this." So now we'll use hopefully Pam's expertise, find grants that fits that and apply. But improvement grants are very hard to get because they get hundreds of them, literally. And they're all for good causes and everything else, so you have to state your case in such a way that you'll approve it.
They stick out.
Yes.
So...
By no means, I, I'm not an expert in grants, but I'm willing to help. I've written one and have received the grant. I earned the grant.
A lot of it's following directions.
Yes, writing well and right to set the focus on it, so I'm willing to help if that helps.
Fire department, SCBA, which is what they always have struggled. We got denied three times before we found that one. Accepted.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? I guess we're about up to adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Moved and supported to adjourn, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.